Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's time to begin tonight's city council meeting for February 10th, 2025. At this time, please rise if you're able and silence your cell phones. And Mr. Bob Hogsitt will lead us in indication.
So quiet, like a lull before a storm. I know that couldn't be, though. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you in the name of Jesus, thanking you for the privilege of obeying you in praying for those in authority over us. We thank you for the new administration. We pray that you'd be with Mayor Farrell, be with his administration here and these council members as they serve you. We don't have much that we need to ask for, other than your wisdom. And with that wisdom, we ask for compassion. And with that compassion, we pray for justice. Not like we might have, but by your example. Because it's in your name we pray. Amen.
By allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Ms. Miller, can you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Archer?
Present.
Mr. Arthur?
Present.
Ms. Blau?
Present.
Ms. Holly?
Present.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Lehman?
Here.
Ms. Mount is absent. Ms. Rumbow?
Here.
Mr. Shockley?
Here.
Ms. Sweeney?
Here.
Ms. Walling?
Present.
And we do have a quorum. Item number three is a synopsis of the last meeting.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilwoman Lehman and a second by Councilwoman Walling. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the synopsis is approved. Item number four is the reports of the mayor. Tonight is the budget message. Welcome, Mayor Farrell.
Good evening. How are you?
All right.
Nice to see you. When I was campaigning, several people asked me, what was the first thing I was going to do when I got elected, you know, day one in office? And I usually said to them, well, the first thing the mayor needs to do is the budget. And so, you know, first things being first, I dealt with some snow and ice, fire and flood. We went up to Supreme Court to fight with the opioid distributors and down to Marina to fish our police boat out of the water. And so now, I'm happy to be with you tonight to give back to the first thing, which is the budget. So we're going to do it a little bit different, maybe than has been done in the past. The first slide I have shown up here is the city charter requirements. That's why I'm here tonight. It's because I'm required, as the mayor, to give you the budget, which you have, and also a budget message, which I'm about to deliver. I've highlighted, underlined here, the things that we're going to do. We're going to submit to the council, to the budget. I'm going to explain both in fiscal terms and terms of work program. I'm going to outline the proposed financial policies, describe the important features, indicate the major changes from the last year, summarize the debt positions, and then also in the budget that you have is the five-year capital program that we're going to deliver to you.
Mayor Farrell, we do not have a copy of the budget.
Is in your binders? Do you have binders?
We do not.
We do not.
You stand by. Binders are right there.
I was just waiting for a good moment to tell you we didn't have them. I didn't remember that too early.
Yeah. That's good.
But I didn't want you to go too far either.
No, this is perfect. Well, you can read the requirements some more straight out of the charter while we wait.
As long with the ice fire and the...
Right, as long, all of it. There we go. Your binders.
I'll trade you. The funds alleys.
Oh, this is three.
Thank you.
Everyone good?
Yes.
Mayor Farrell, your floor.
Excellent. So for all of you that have short attention spans, which I know many people online do, and just want me to get to the point, you don't need to read through all of this, but here's the executive summary of everything I'm about to say in the next 30 slides. Our biggest revenue source comes from taxes and fees. And the slope of that line is on a downward trajectory, meaning we're getting less in taxes and fees as revenue into the city. At the same time, the federal grant money that we've been getting is going to start diminishing in the out years. So we won't have as much money from grants. Our expenses are going up at the same time. Now, over the last five years, you're going to see that the number of employees the city has is increasing. At the same time, we've been significantly under-budgeting our insurance costs, because insurance is getting more expensive and we've been budgeting the number that is under what we've been actually been paying. If you look at the city's assets, you're going to see that there's a lot of maintenance that's required for those assets, the properties that we own. And our liabilities are substantial. I estimate somewhere around $250 million of unfunded liabilities that the city owes that we need to deal with. With that, if you take your revenues and your expenses, what's left is a cash position. And we currently sit below what I consider to be a healthy benchmark, and I'll explain to you why that is. All of that in the context of there is $15 million in back taxes, delinquent fees that the city is owed from our residents that they haven't paid us. So while we need cash, we haven't been able to collect it. All of that to say, to set the context for next year, the proposed budget that I'm giving you, that's FY '26, which starts July 1st, is going to be a flat budget, meaning that from what we passed last year, the current year that we're in, halfway through, the total number is going to be about $78 million, which is the same budget that many of you that were on council passed, as far as the same top line dollars. And what we're going to do to manage all of this is that we're going to have a disciplined spending approach and stay focused on our priorities. Again, that's the executive summary. All right? I'll walk you through how I came to those conclusions and what we're going to do, but that's the big picture. Let me start by breaking down, when I say the city, what it means today in the context is we're going to just talk about the general fund up here, because there's lots of budgets in the city. We have a coal severance tax, or I'm sorry, coal severance special revenue fund. That's small, but every year we have some money. The Water Quality Board, which is composed of the Sanitary Board and the Stormwater Utility, is not about, is not part of the budget that I'm going to talk to you about today. All right? There are many projects that the city oversees that are part of that, but that's not in today's context. I'll mention some pieces that we're doing, but that's there. HMDA, the Huntington Municipal Development Authority, which oversees Huntington and Bloom and downtown investments, the group that owns Pullman Plaza, is not in this budget. Nor is the Huntington Municipal Parking Board or any of the opioid settlement money. I want to say this about the opioid settlement funds. Last year, last January, this council was shown a big check, $2.7 million. And you were told that it was the first of 14, or it was the first of 14 total number of payments that we would receive. And I believe Councilwoman Walling asked the question, will all the checks be this big? And the answer was something like, they'll be close to it. But I've come to understand that that's not the case, that we are going to get approximately 13 more checks, but the total amount of money that we're going to receive is closer to $6 million total, which means we have $3 million in the bank account now, and I expect now, over the next 13 years, that we'll collect a total of about $3 million more for a total of $6 million. We can break that down another time, but that's one of the things I learned as I did a deep dive into our budget, into our revenues, into all of these funds, something that I didn't understand before I started this. Something else I didn't understand is that our sanitation and trash, which is an enterprise fund, not part of the general fund that we're going to talk about today, charges our residents a certain amount of money. And then we spend more than that, approximately $400,000 more each year, right, to collect the money, or to collect the trash than what we get paid to do. Right? So if this was a business, it would say, that's a losing proposition, that we're losing money each year to do it. And the same goes for the Marshall Health Network Arena, where it's not a money-making endeavor. It is more of a contribution the city makes to keep the thing going. All of that to say, the things on the left here are revenue-producing enterprise funds. That is not part of the general fund. On the right, you'll also see non-revenue-producing organizations that you're all familiar with, the Building Commission, the Land Reuse Agency, the Grants, A.D. Lewis Center. Those are parts of the city that don't bring in revenue, but are conduits for money and other programs that we do. But again, today, what we're going to talk about is the general fund, and that's the budget that's before you. This is FY '24. That is the year that ended last June. And I show it to you as an illustration of what makes up the general revenue fund. You'll see that taxes, business and occupation tax and sales tax make up about 40% of our total budget. Fees, that would be the municipal service fee and the city service fee, make up another 19%. Again, this was last year, the year that's already passed us. You'll see that federal grants made up 12% of our budget. That's going to be an important number that I'm going to refer back to later to show you that is a substantial amount of money we receive is from federal grants, and that state grants make up a very small percent of our total grants. All right? So future federal funding is something we should all be very cognizant of, and that money might go away. All right? But it's been a significant part of our budget. On this graph, you'll see the blue line at the bottom is what you've budgeted as city council. It's the number that you think we're going to collect in B and O tax. I think it's important to point out that it's a guess, right? It's an educated guess, based on what we've collected in the past, what's going on in the business climate, but it's what we think is going to happen. All right? And you'll see that that number has steadily climbed throughout the years. The orange line is the actual money that we've collected. So what's important to me is that in this first part here, these three years before COVID, you'll see, we predicted with pretty good accuracy what the B and O tax would be, meaning we budgeted the same amount, or approximately the same amount, that we collected, actually. After COVID, that number changed, where we started budgeting for less, but we started collecting more. Many people will ask, why do we collect more? And why did it spike? And why is it going down? And those are excellent questions. And a lot of that has to do with federal funds that came through there. When a federal grant gets spent, when CARES money, ARPA money gets spent, you collect more money in a B and O tax, the business and occupation tax, that's a self-reported tax from businesses, and it exceeded what we thought, which is a great thing. But you can also see that that number is coming down, right? And I'll draw your attention to the $18 million here and what we think is going to finish at the end of this year. So this last column is the FY '25 estimated, which is our finance team has looked forward till June 30th to say, what do we think that number will approximately end at? And we think it's going to be somewhere in the $15 to $16 million range, which is still above what we budgeted. It's good, but why bring your attention to it? It's because that number is coming down significantly from the $18 million that it was before. Well, we're doing all this to set the context for what, how we're going to finish this year, and then look forward to next year, what I'm going to propose. This is the sales tax number. Once again, you'll see that council has budgeted a conservative amount of money, which is a wise practice and one that I encourage you to continue to embrace. And you can see that the sales tax number went up, and then again, in FY '24, peaked at about $10 million, and now it's starting to come down. All right? As we look forward, I expect that sales tax number, I would like it to go up, but we have to be aware that as federal funds no longer flow through the area like they did, the sales tax number, people spending money will necessarily be less, unless we find a way to bring more people into the city to buy things, to go to restaurants, to go to movies, to go to our stores. That's how that sales tax number goes up. When it's going down, it's an indicator that something isn't as good as it could be. This is the total amount of grants that we've received since 2019. You can see the blue part of that graph is the federal money, and the orange is the state money. So once again, all of the money we received, most of the money that we've received, have come from federal sources. You can see that again, in the COVID era, it peaked up around 15 million. You can see, at the end of this year, it's going to be around 11 million, 11.4 million. As we look forward, what I'm going to tell you is I expect that these numbers, particularly the pre-COVID numbers, is what we're going to return to. I hope that's not the case, right? But I cannot tell you with any amount of certainty that the future of federal grants will be as much as it was in the past, right? And you need to be aware of that as we look forward and set a budget about what we're going to do. This line is all revenue. That is, the B and O tax, the sales tax, all the revenue received with the grants. You can see in FY '22, it peaked at 106 million. And we're projecting here, at the end of FY '25, for that to be somewhere around 78 million, somewhere between 78 and 80 million. Why is this an estimate? It's because when we set a budget, when we say it's going to be 78 million, right, it doesn't mean that money automatically comes. It means we have to collect it from residents. It means they have to pay their B and O tax, they have to pay the sales tax, and if something happens and people stop coming to our city, then that number is going to be lower. All right? We don't get to spend it on day one. We only get to spend it once we collect it. All right? And so we hope that it's going to be $80 million. That would be $2 million more than what we budgeted. That would be fantastic. If it's not that much, we think we can conservatively say it should come in at least at what we budgeted, which is a very good thing, all right? But there's still some uncertainty about how we're going to finish the year. This is the estimated past due in delinquent fees and taxes slide. What it is intended to show you is that over the last five years, the total of all these numbers is $15 million. That is, in the last five years, I just showed you the revenue numbers, right? And included in that revenue, taxes that people owe us but haven't paid us. We made a sale, but we didn't collect the cash. What I'm telling you is that there's $15 million out there that is not being used by the city, right, as part of our ending fund balance. Even though we've said we've got this much revenue, you have to consider the fact that we don't have the cash. And if we don't collect it ever, and we have to write it off, or it's uncollectible, those revenue numbers get adjusted down. This slide now represents the expenses that the city has, right? Again, the blue line is what we budgeted. The orange line is the actual. And you can see, once again, we've had conservative estimates of what we should budget. That is, that we budgeted less, you know, and then when we only spent the money once we had it. So you see this spike back to the 91 million, you can think, why did we budget 68 million and then we spent 91 million? It's because of the federal grants that came through, right? It's because that we actually collected more money. And when we collect more money, then we decided, as the council and the mayor decided, to spend more money. So many of the things you've approved in the past have been because we collected more money than we expected, and then we spent it. We had the money to spend. And you can see, we always try to make sure that it ends up where you don't spend more than you actually collect. Again, I've given this estimate of 78 to 80 million at the end of this year, because if we only collect 78, I only want to spend 78. What I don't want to do is have us spend 80 and only collect 78. All right? And so what we're trying to do now is to make sure that our expenses are on the things that we need and not having the luxuries that maybe we've had in the past, the ability to have largesse and give money to folks that we've wanted to give it to until we know we actually have the money. One of the reasons our expenses have climbed is because we have more employees that work for the city. This slide shows on the left, 2019, where we had about 325 full-time equivalent employees. What that FTE term means is that part-time folks, two half-time folks, count as one full-time. And so this is taking all the part-time people into account. You can see that we had about 326, and now we have about 375, right? That is a 49-person increase over the last five years, which means that we have more people on payroll, more health insurance, we're doing more work, right? But our headcount has climbed over the last five years. Of course, people are going to ask me, where's all that headcount coming from? These lines represent the fire, the police, our public works, and then administrative positions. What you can see is that the police are the top blue line. They've had about a 10% increase, as has, well, fires had one person increase. Our public works has modestly increased, but the biggest increase of them all was from 71 administrative people to almost 199. All right? There's been a big increase. And so that's something that we have to be aware of, cognizant of. Many of these people are doing great work. I'm not here to tell you they're not. But if you want to know why our personnel expense is going up, it can be found in this slide, I'm sure. This blue line represents what we've budgeted for insurance. You can see, back from 2021, we've budgeted about $9.7 million. And thankfully, the expense was actually less than that. We have a self-insured health insurance program, and so that's great. In years that we had more expenses than we budgeted for, obviously it exceeded it. And over the last three years, what I want to point out is that we have exceeded, by far, you know, almost $2 million of what we've budgeted. Healthcare has gotten more expensive. Claims have gotten more expensive, and it is affecting the city. And so I highlight this to you so that when you look at the budget that I'm going to present for you for next year, what you're going to see is a number more up here in the $12 million range and not down at the $9.7 million range, because I expect, in a realistic budget, that our healthcare costs are going to be higher than what we've budgeted for in the past. We've talked about revenues and expenses, and now I want to talk about assets. All right? The city owns a bunch of property. I've listed several dozen here, many of them you'll recognize. City Hall, the building that we're standing in. You'll see that there are fire stations are on there, our armory where we have our public works folks. The A.D. Lewis Center is owned by the city. The police department, parts of the public works, Rotary Tower, Shockey Tower, and then we even lease four or five properties to places like Kiwanis and Valley Health. All right? These are all assets of the city. Anyone that owns a house or a building understands that those assets cost money. When the roof leaks, we have to fix it. All right? And this is a significant burden to the city to continue to have to maintain assets all throughout the city. Along with those assets, we also have a lot of liabilities. Part of this, I discovered as I was digging through the budget, trying to understand where all of our money was going, and this is not just the general fund. Some of these are outside of the general fund. But I want to bring to your attention the substantial liabilities that I believe the city has. The first is our closed pension plan, which I know many of you are keenly aware of. The good news is that a lot of progress has been made. We are current with our payments, and that if we continue to stay current with our payments, that this will be paid off by 2050. All right? But there's a substantial amount of money that has to go into the pool, that our actuarial consultants tell us how much it is, to pay off that $123 million unfunded liability. We are funding it through future payments, and again, by 2050, we're going to have it paid off. And that's a great thing, but it's still a substantial amount of money, a liability that the city has. We also have other post-employment benefits liabilities. That is, healthcare costs, vacation time paid out, another $93 million that we owe to our employees that we will have to pay them after they are no longer employed. Deeds Hollow is our landfill that has been closed for some time. It is in Guyanet, and it is no longer accepting new trash. In order to close it, it's going to cost us about $30 million that we do not currently have set aside. We have a couple million dollars set aside, but right now, we do not have the money to close the Deeds Hollow landfill, and we are working to find ways to close that gap and figure out how we can do it. It is a requirement from the Department of Environmental Protection for us to close it, and we are working with them to find solutions to how we're going to do it. But that liability is a real liability that the city has that we're going to have to find a way to close. The Water Quality Board, which, as I said earlier, is not part of the general fund. It is its own organization. They owe about $20 million in notes and bonds. They have a revenue source to pay for it, and it's in good standing, but it is still a liability. HMDA, again, the Huntington Municipal Development Authority, which owns Pullman Plaza, has a note out to a bank for about $6 million and is currently owes rent to the Tri-State Transit Authority. They also have a note payable to the West Virginia EDA for the ACF project. Again, these sit outside of the general fund, but they are part of the city, and we owe money to folks to pay them off. I mentioned to you sanitation and trash. There was a one-time loss of $2.6 million back in FY '21, where we made some concessions because of COVID, which is not going to come back, not COVID, but the monies that we forgave. The bigger concern for me is that the $400,000 of annual loss that we have with that enterprise fund, which is subsidized out of the general fund. So when you see a $400,000 line coming from the general fund to sanitation and trash, it's because it costs us more to pick up the trash than we charge the residents currently, because we haven't raised the fees in a long time, right? And they continue to have costs for trucks and employees and everything else. The Marshall Health Network Arena, the Civic Center, we have allocated $500,000 from the general fund every year. What I can tell you is that last year, again, the year that ended June 30th, 2024, it cost us about $900,000, by the way the contract's set up. I expect this year, it'll cost us even more, right? And so it is not right now making us money and is not driving people to downtown the way I would like it to. This is an area of concern that we've been focusing on, trying to find a way to lower our costs and increase the amount of revenue that is generated out of that facility. Finally, there was an intercity transfer. I say intercity, meaning the land use reagency owes us, owes the general fund $480,000. It's not technically a liability for the city, but it is a liability inside of the land reuse fund that they owe the city, so it'll come out in intercompany transfers. All total, this number is about $250 million. I want to talk now about financial resiliency. This concept, if I put it in simple business terms, you have revenues, you have expenses. What's left over could be considered profit. In this case, we don't make a profit as the city, but it's more retained earnings gets carried over into the city as part of a ending fund balance, is what you would see it on in our, in the spreadsheets that you have. What I've shown you here is the expenses. Now, this is expenses without grants associated with it. And I've drawn a red line here of where I think our financial resiliency line should be. It's about $11 million, and that number represents two months of operating expenses, all right? Two months is a number that we got from the Government Financial Officers Association as a benchmark to say that if you're a government agency, you should have about two months of operating expenses on hand in case something happens. For instance, if COVID happens, or somehow your federal funds got frozen, and you want to be able to continue to operate the city, you should have money in the bank, right? It's a little cash in savings accounts that you can, you can pay the bills that come in, right, on a regular basis without feeling cash-strapped. And $11 million is where it would fit for us. Now, that number's going to fluctuate, so please don't think this line is a flat line. If we had a $106 million budget, it would be more than $11 million. But I've shown you at the end, because of it today, you know, where we're here in FY '25 and '26, that number is about $11 million that I think we should be shooting for. That number specifically, you'll see in your packet, is the ending unassigned fund balance, all right? So if you look in there and find the ending fund balance, it's the unassigned one, and what you'll see is I've again drawn this red line to show where $11 million would fit. In FY '24, we are right there. At FY '25, what we estimate, let me be clear, what we're estimating for at the end of this year, June 30th, in five months, we're estimating that that will be somewhere between $7 and $9 million. That depends on, remember when I talked about, is it going to be 78 or 80? It's going to be $7 or $9 million. That's the $2 million swing, and it is below the $11 million benchmark. What that feels like for our finance team is that they have to make sure that we have the cash in hand that we've collected before we can pay out bills, right? We're doing okay, but this is not a healthy, comfortable position according to industry's benchmarks. And I would like to build financial resiliency so that at any given time, our city has two months of operating expenses on hand as part of that ending fund balance to give us the ability to make all the payments that we owe. Why does that number go up and down? This is because of federal assistance, right? You can see that when we get a bunch of federal money, that number spikes, and that as the, it is correlated, as the federal money goes down, right, our ending fund balances go down. Again, why is this a concern? It's because I believe that our federal assistance is going to be less in the future than it has been, which means that if it is less, then our ending fund balance might necessarily be less, and I consider that to be a problem. And so when I... And so when I think about our financial resiliency, this is the number I'm focused on, trying to rebuild to keep us in a healthy position. Let me pause for a minute and say that all of that is my understanding of where we are today. All right? How I see the city in the light of where we are sitting here in the middle of February of 2025, trying to finish out fiscal year 2025. And what I'm now going to propose to you is what I think our FY26 budget should be. That is, the budget that starts July 1st, 2025. And in my view, a budget should be these things. All right? It needs to be transparent, because these are taxpayer dollars. All right? And I want to clearly show how we're spending each of our taxpayer dollars to improve our city. I want it to be accurate with the best available data, the historic trends, and our current realities. It's why I pointed out some of those deltas that we saw between what we budgeted and what the actuals are, so that you would see what I see, and that it's as accurate as we can be. Because what I know is that we're going to need to be flexible. All right? If we've known anything about the past few years, is that things can change very quickly, and you have to be in a position that you can quickly update what your plan is without compromising your priorities. To do this, we have to be focused. All right? Disciplined with our spending and spending on what our priorities are. I want this to be understandable, so that all of you can understand it, and all of our residents can understand it, and forward-looking, to think about the long term, because we are stewards for the future. All right? And I want to make good decisions for the long term rather than expedient ones that might help us during an election cycle or this particular year. And so those are the principles that I think about when I'm about to describe to you what the FY26 budget's going to be. These are the financial principles that we built the budget on. The first in the left-hand column is financial resiliency. We've already talked about why two months is important to me, and it's a plan for quarterly cash flow issues, because, again, we collect money quarterly from our residents, so that money comes in, and then it goes out, and at the end of a quarter, we might be low on cash. That's why we build the financial resiliency. For the money that we do have, I wanted to allocate it based on our priorities. Many of you have already heard me talk about what those priorities are. Public safety is job number one. The second thing is infrastructure, and the third is economic growth. That is what I want to spend our money on, whether it's our policemen, our firemen, our public works folks, our admin folks. Everyone needs to understand that we're all here for the residents of Huntington, and our priority is going to be those three things. I want to continue to keep spending within our means. All right? That means to conservatively budget. I don't want to budget for a number and then just squeak it out every time. That's a scary proposition for everybody. But I also want to be realistic and show you what I think it's going to be and do our best to hit it without being too aggressive. And at the end of the day, my sincere desire is that we grow our population, not our fees and taxes. I can promise you that while I was campaigning, there was not one person that came up to me and said, "You know what I want you to do when you're mayor? I want you to raise my taxes." All right? And we're going to try not to do that, and the best way to do that is to grow the population, to have more people paying taxes, and then we won't need to raise the actual rate on anybody. We can just have more people in the city. So this is the same slide I showed you before with revenue. All right? It goes back to 2019 in the same way, and then what I projected now differently, I've added this column of FY26. And what you can see is that we projected seventy-eight million dollars for a budget, and here it's seventy-eight million dollars. I consider this to be a flat budget. All right? It is roughly the same number. We're not going to try to spend more money. We're just going to try to allocate the spending that we have in accordance with our priorities. The way that breaks down is the same way we did before. We've got forty-six different sources of revenue. You can see that the taxes will make up about thirty-five percent, with BNO being less than it was before. The fees are still going to be about nineteen percent, and what's different here, I'll draw your attention back to the grants, that federal grants make up sixteen percent versus twelve. Right? Because I believe that we are in the last years of the money that's going to flow through the city when it comes to the Infrastructure and Jobs Act. All right? I think as that money gets spent through 2026, that number's going to start to go down, because I don't think there's going to be new monies. And because our total revenue is coming down, and that grant line is staying the same, it's a higher percent, which makes it even scarier that we're more reliant on federal taxes, right, than we have been in the past. It went from twelve percent up to sixteen percent. Here's the BNO tax number. What you'll see here at the far end is that I'm estimating that we're going to collect more than the fourteen million that we budgeted last year, oops, sorry, fourteen that we did last year, and we've increased it by five hundred thousand to fourteen point five million for our BNO tax. And I've also increased the budget for our sales tax to eight point five. Again, I feel like I'm belaboring the point, but what's scary to me is that if we peaked at ten, and that number's coming down, at some point, it's hopefully going to not intersect with that budget line. But that downward trend is what worries me, is that we are seeing less revenue coming into the city in BNO tax and sales tax, and we cannot continue to budget for more. I'm going to try to land that plane so that we have about the same amount of, say, of BNO and sales tax as we budgeted, like we did before COVID. Here's the grant number, and you can see, again, the ten point eight, six million is for the 2026. We know that money is already in hand, and we have those grants that we know we've won. That's great. I just wouldn't expect it in '27. I hope it does. Don't get me wrong. All right? We're still going to work as hard as we can to get it. I just don't have the expectation that that number's going to be as much as it was. So how are we going to start cutting some of these funds? All right? This is an example of one of the areas that is going to be less next year. So contributions in 2024 and 2025 were about three point six to three point eight million dollars. Next year, we're going to try to make that two point seven million dollars. All right? And what that means is that a lot of the charities that we all love, right, that are a very important part of the city, won't have the benefit of the city being a generous donor as they've been in the past. And it's not to say that we're going to abandon all of them, because that's not my intent. We have many partners that rely on us. We have many contractual relationships. All right? We will continue to be a partner with people like the park, the library, the animal shelter. We'll continue to meet those obligations. All right? But there will be some areas that we will not be able to continue to do it because we don't have the money. All right? And we will work with them, all of them, to make this a better city, but what we need to do first is what the city needs to do, our obligations, to provide essential services, the fire, the police, the public works. To fill those potholes, we have to have the money to do it first, and before we can do anything else, we have to do those very essential government services, and that's where we're going to focus our money and our time. These are the priorities that we've talked about. You've heard me say them before. And as you look through the budget, I want you to know that this is how we're going to spend our money. We're going to spend it on public safety to make Huntington safe. We're going to spend it on the infrastructure and invest more so that we can have a good, solid backbone to the city, and then we're going to try to create an environment that grows the economy, because if we can do that, we can grow the population, and we can grow the tax base. Here are some of the highlights that are in the budget that you'll find. The police and the fire department will receive the same amount of funding, full funding as they have before. They may spend it a little bit differently inside of their budget, right, but they will have the same top-line numbers. We're not asking them to take any cuts. We're also going to find a way to get that Westmoreland Fire Station bill. We're waiting on money from our federal allocation. It's been approved, and we're told it's coming, and I can't wait to be standing there next to Chief Fuller as we break ground in Westmoreland on that fire station. You're also seeing the budget that I've added two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the jail bill. Again, our police department needs to know that we have their back and that they can do their job. One of the things I consistently have heard is that we can't do that because of the jail bill. We're going to make sure that that's not a problem. I hope we spend none of this money, because no one commits any crimes. The jail bill won't be a reason that we don't enforce the law in the city. You also see that we'll have increased legal expenses. I expect for us to do what we need to do in the city, that we're going to sue more people, and we're going to get sued more. Again, that's not my desire, but when change happens, that's what you can expect. So we're allocating it now in the budget, because I believe it's realistic that that's what's going to happen. Finally, you heard me talk in my inaugural address about the Veteran Homeless Pilot Project. That is going to be an emphasis item, and that we're going to spend money on that to try to use it as a pilot, to understand what we can do to get to functional zero homelessness in the city with our veterans. As far as the infrastructure goes, we're going to invest in our infrastructure. We're going to see it in the budget. The first thing I want to talk about is the Enzlo Park additional egress route. Many of you know, with last week's flash flood that came to Enzlo Park, we continue to have a problem, right, with flooding in that neighborhood through the south side and out to Westmoreland. That problem will not be fixed in the short term. Right? It is a flash flooding issue that's going to take significant federal investment, partnership with the Army Corps of Engineers, to fix that problem. The city cannot fix it alone. We cannot fix it with just the county's help or the state's help. We're going to need federal help, and that all takes time. So in the meantime, what I want to do is make sure that there's a second egress route out of Enzlo Park besides that one bridge. We have an impending snowstorm, which I expect will melt, and then we're going to have more flooding issues. What I am happy to announce today is that, given the threat for potential of additional flooding in the upcoming week, the city has designated the extension of Ritter Boulevard as a secondary emergency and evacuation route. All right? It'll extend from Ritter Boulevard and give access for the people of Enzlo Park out to McCoy Road, and we will make sure that's clearly presented to the public through our communications channel, so folks in Enzlo Park know that they can get out. That won't solve everyone's problems. There are pockets in Enzlo Park that are still tough to get out of, but it does provide a second egress route that we're happy to make sure happens. We're also going to make sure that the unsafe building demolition program is fully funded. Again, many of you have heard me talk about the importance of that. We don't want to tear down buildings to tear them down, but there are a lot of unsafe buildings in neighborhoods, and that we need to find a way to take those downs, and that will be funded. We're also going to continue the street paving. We started a data-driven street paving program that I think is going to pay dividends, and that continues to be funded. And again, this is outside of the general revenue, but the two hundred million dollars in storm water and wastewater projects that are flowing through the Water Quality Board will be something that we continue to support. All right? The wastewater treatment plant in Westmoreland, the separation of the Third and Fifth Avenue sewer and water, or the sewer and storm water lines, and also the pump station are things that we're going to continue to support to make sure that it addresses flooding and Finally, when it comes to economic growth, you'll hear more about this in the coming days, but we're going to continue to invest in the Innovation District. There's going to be a lot of growth down there, and that growth is going to bring jobs to Huntington. Those jobs will hopefully bring people that want to live here. We're going to have to solve our housing problem, because we want them to stay here, and we don't want them to go to other cities. All right? But the downtown Innovation District will be something that draws significant financial investment and significant support from the city. The same goes for the Foundry, the ACF lot in the Highline District. All right? We're going to continue to make sure we develop that. We're going to continue to work with Fairfield on the development in that area as well. These are all things that the city has been involved in for a long time, and we're going to continue to support, because that's what's going to drive economic growth, because the idea is that we want to grow the population of Huntington. That will be the sign of ultimate success, that we've done something right, that people want to live and work here if we do this right. We're going to end back where we started. This is the same summary slide that I showed you before. What I hope it shows you is that our biggest revenue source is on a downward trajectory. All right? Our grants and our revenue is coming down at the same time that our expense is coming up. That is putting pressure on us, because we continue to have to support our assets while we have these overwhelming liabilities that are sitting on top of us. All of that puts us in a cash position that I'm not proud of, and I want to work to make it healthier. The FY26 budget's going to be flat. All right? There'll be some shuffling inside of that budget about where our priorities go, but what you can know is that we're going to be disciplined in our spending, spending on the priorities we talked about, so that we can make this city great. I want to end by saying this. This is from my inaugural address, and if you learn nothing about me, it's that I'm going to be very consistent, as your mayor, about what we're going to do. I said it on day one. All right? I'm going to say it today, and I'm going to say it for a long time. All right? My vision for our great city is for Huntington to be a vibrant jewel city that is the catalyst for growth and prosperity throughout the region. I want us to be a safe, healthy, and welcoming community for everyone who calls this place home. To do that, we don't need to do anything extraordinary. We just need to do the ordinary things extraordinarily well. That begins with providing the essential services needed to ensure public safety, maintain the infrastructure, and enhance the quality of life for our residents. My administration will do that by focusing our resources, your taxpayer dollars, on our greatest challenges, and you'll be able to see evidence of that, of these priorities, in our next budget. I hope when you look in that budget, you'll see that, just what I said I was going to do, and you have it in front of you. I look forward to talking to you all during our budget hearings in the coming weeks. Thank you.
All right, now we will move on to the next part of our meeting. Item number five is the second reading of an ordinance, 2025-0-02. Ms. Miller.
An ordinance of counsel authorizing the mayor to execute a deed transferring a right-of-way within the city of Huntington to the West Virginia Department of Transportation Division of Highways.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilwoman Walling and a second from Councilwoman Lehman. Mr. Dameron, good evening.
Good evening, Scott Dameron, acting city attorney. The ordinance that you had before you would approve a transfer of a non-controlled access right-of-way, which is essentially a right-of-way, from the city to the West Virginia Division of Highways. Parcel consists of a strip of property in front of, or in the front part of, the Huntington Housing Authority property on Halgrir Boulevard, which stretches about three hundred and fifty feet wide and ten feet deep. This is some property that was acquired by the city of Huntington upon agreement with the Division of Highways when the Halgrir project was started. Now that the project is nearly complete, the parties agree that it would be appropriate for the city to convey a right-of-way to the Division of Highways so that the division may maintain that along with the remainder of the Halgrir corridor. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Dameron? Anyone from the public? All right, can we have the committee report, please?
Yeah, zoning committee met and forwarded the council with a favorable recommendation.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Miller, please call the roll.
Item number five, yes, sir. Mr. Archer. Mr. Arthur.
Yes.
Ms. Blau.
Yes.
Pardon?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Holly is absent.
No.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. My bad.
Yeah, yeah.
Me and my Hollies.
Sorry, that was not a no vote. That was a no, Ms. Holly's not absent.
Let's go back to Ms. Holly.
Yes.
Thank you. I've got to get used to this. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Mount is absent. Ms. Rumball?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Ms. Walling?
Yes.
Mr. Shockley?
Yes, and the ordinance is approved. Item number six is the second reading of an ordinance, 2025-0-03. Ms. Miller.
An ordinance of counsel of the city of Huntington, Cabell and Wayne Counties, West Virginia, vacating, closing, and abandoning a portion of an alleyway south of Tenth Avenue, east of and parallel to Twentieth Street. Said portion of the alleyway being 10 feet in width and 120 feet in length in Gideon District, Cabell County, West Virginia.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Walling and a second by Councilwoman Lehman. Good evening.
Good evening. Kate Daniel from Campbell Woods Law Firm, on behalf of my client, OEA Real Estate LLC. Our client submitted an application to abandon a portion of this alleyway between 12th and 13th Street on 10th Avenue. Our client owns both of the property on the west and the east of the alleyway, and they desire to make it contiguous so that they can develop the property. We have approvals from AEP, Mountaineer Gas, and the sewer line, well, the City of Huntington for the sewer line. There are facilities serving a two-story building on the north, and we can get an easement for that. There's also a sewer line that goes through the alley that serves portions of the facility, and we can also give an easement on that. There are no Mountaineer Gas company facilities. Nothing will be built on the alleyway. It's just his desire to make it contiguous so he can develop the property. I can answer any questions you have.
Any questions from council? Okay, anyone from the public?
Chair, I'd just like to make a point. I believe you are from the public and that the city representative...
No.
Kathy is?
She represents the petition.
She represents OEA, the petitioner. She represents petitioner. So, sorry, I didn't realize that she was going to be here tonight to present, but you're fine. You're good. So, you said what I was going to say.
Okay.
Let me back up. Anyone from the public? Committee report?
Mr. Chair, the zoning committee met and forwarded the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Miller, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Item number six. Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Pardon?
Yes.
Ms. Blau?
Yes.
Ms. Holly?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Mount is absent. Ms. Rumball?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Ms. Walling?
Yes.
Mr. Archer?
Yes.
Mr. Shockley?
Yes, and the ordinance is approved. Item number seven is a first reading of an ordinance, 2025-0-04. Ms. Miller.
An ordinance of counsel amending, modifying, and reenacting Section 951.08 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Huntington as revised, refuse collection.
Good evening.
Good evening. Scott Dameron again. I want to get up here quickly so no one takes my place.
Is that why you retired?
That's right. Just can't make up my mind. The ordinance that you had before you would reduce the amount of penalties charged for the late fee for the refuse fee, and only the refuse fee, from 5% per quarter down to 2% per quarter. Currently, if there's no payment on the refuse fee, over the course of a year, the penalties would be as much as 21.5% according to my calculations because they're compounded per quarter, and that would increase every year thereafter. Now, there's no excuse for not paying your refuse fee, but we want to be fair and consistent with the other penalties that we charge. The other penalty that we charge on a fee is a municipal service fee, which is 2% per quarter also, which is what we're seeking here. For comparison's sake, the IRS charges in addition to tax, which is a penalty for unpaid taxes, which is 0.5% per month or 6% per year, and that tops out at 25% of the total amount. So, what we're seeking to do is pretty consistent with what other governmental entities charge in penalties. So, we're requesting that you consider this ordinance and approve it to make our fee, our penalty for fees more consistent. Glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions of council from Mr. Dameron?
Chair, just to reiterate what was discussed in work session for the public who might not have turned in. So, this is a reduction of a fee, which sounds lovely.
It's a reduction of a penalty on a fee.
Sorry. And, but it would not necessarily be retroactive. It will only be for...
Correct.
In the future if...
Practically.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. We will move this one to a second reading. Item number eight is a resolution, 2025-r-04. Ms. Miller.
A resolution of counsel authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Civic Plus for the annual renewal of the C Click Fix Huntington, West Virginia 311 app.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Thanks, Sarah. I may have beat you that time, Ali. I have a motion by Tia and a second by Sarah Walling. Mr. Mark Bates.
Mr. Chairman and members, Mark Bates, Public Works Director, the administration is seeking council approval for the annual renewal with Civic Plus for the C Click Fix Huntington 311 app. This is the smartphone application that allows individuals to notify the city about issues they're having, as well as residents with basic knowledge, make knowledge of basics city services. The issues that can be reported range from parking complaints to potholes, code enforcement, rental housing issues, and also recently added our winter weather advisory, our debris removal for the flood of 2625, and other items. The annual cost for the March 2025 through February 2026 will be $27,390. This expense is paid through the Information Technology Division Contracted Services Budget Line item. As of today, 19,733 issues have been fixed all time since going online in January of 2022. And just as a, another note, in 2024, there were 5,874 requests made. There were 5,413 that we were able to close with a days-to acknowledge of 1.7 days and days to close at 21 days to close. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from Mr. Bates? Anyone from the public?
Mike, can we ask Mark if the streetlights...
Can you come to the podium, please? Can you have your name and address for the record, please?
Kenny Boggs, North Endwood. Just on the way here, I was coming here, I counted the number of streetlights that are out, and I was just wondering maybe if we could report those to the 311 app so anybody in the city, if you have a streetlight out, we could report that and hopefully solve some of those issues. That was just a thought.
Members, we do have a section for streetlight reporting on the 311 app. However, we have to have the pole number and the nearest location given to us to be able to report that to AEP.
Thank you, sir. Can I have the committee report, please?
Yes, yes. Mike, it's wrong because Holly's not here.
Okay, that's weird.
She's absent, sorry.
Yeah, no problem. All those in paper signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And the resolution is approved. Item number nine is a resolution, 2025-r-05. Ms. Miller.
A resolution of counsel authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to provide fuel services to the Public Works Complex.
Move to adopt.
Second.
You have a motion from Councilwoman Walling and a second from Councilwoman Johnson. Welcome back, Mr. Mark Bates.
Welcome to be back. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. The Purchasing Division issued a request for proposals to provide fuel services to the Public Works Complex at 800 Virginia Avenue with all proposals due by 10:00 a.m. on January 8th, 2025. The city received one proposal for this service from Dawson Thompson Oil Company of Huntington, West Virginia. A review committee comprised of city personnel met and reviewed the proposal. The committee determined that Dawson Thompson's proposal did meet the needs of the city. Dawson Thompson Oil proposal includes them providing the needed tanks to hold the fuel at their expense and an initial cost of $5,684.10 for monitoring equipment. As I explained earlier, that is the system that we will need for our employees to use the swipe card to be able to obtain the fuel. Dawson Thompson will provide the fuel at a markup of 0.2050 cents per gallon above the wholesale price for the Ashland Charleston region. We're requesting that we move forward into a one-year contract with Dawson Oil, Thompson Oil Company, and that will automatically renew for four additional one-year terms on the anniversary date, provided that both, all parties are agreeable. All documentation is in your packet. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Yep, any question for Mark Bates? Any questions from the public? Committee report?
Public Works met and forward to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the resolution is approved. Excuse me. Item number 10 is a resolution, 2025-r-06. Ms. Miller.
A resolution of counsel confirming the reappointment of Stephen Turner to the Huntington Municipal Parking Board.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, was that? Linda Rumball?
No, Linda Blau.
Linda Blau. Man.
We'll get used to this eventually.
That's true. That's new names.
Yeah, I'll just blend them all together. And who?
Teresa moved. Linda second.
Committee report? Will you give a sense?
Will you give a personnel committee report?
Personnel committee, for sending to council with our favorable recommendations.
All right, thank you. Anyone from the public wishing to speak? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the resolution is approved. Item number 11 is a resolution, 2025-r-07. Ms. Miller.
A resolution of counsel confirming the reappointment of Kirk Doddrell to the Huntington Municipal Parking Board.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Linda Blau and a second by Councilwoman Walling. And Ms. Johnson, can you give a committee report again? You're the only one there's not here. You're the senior member.
This is sending back to council, this favorable recommendation.
All right, thank you very much. Anybody from the public on this appointment? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the resolution is approved. Item number 12 is a resolution, 2025-r-09. Ms. Miller.
A resolution of counsel confirming the appointment of Mark Cross to the Huntington Municipal Parking Board.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
This is sending back to council, recommendation.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Anyone, any questions from council? Anyone from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the resolution is approved. Item number 13 is a resolution, 2025-r-10. Ms. Miller.
A resolution of counsel confirming the appointment of Drew Hedser to the Huntington Municipal Parking Board.
Mr. Archer?
Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Send to council, favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Any questions of council? Anyone from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the resolution is approved. Item number 14 is a resolution, 2025-r-12. Ms. Miller.
A resolution of counsel confirming the appointment of Jan Raider to the Reasonable Accommodation Appeal Board.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Archer and a second by Councilwoman Lehman.
Council with favorable recommendation.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone, any questions of council on the appointment? Anyone from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the resolution is approved. Item number 15 is a resolution, 2025-r-14. Ms. Miller.
A resolution of counsel confirming the appointment of Chris Miller to the Tri-State Transit Authority Board.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Linda Blau and a second by Councilwoman Walling.
Send to council, favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Any questions of council?
I have a statement.
Ms. Ma'am.
I was contacted by a representative from SEIU District 1199, which represents West Virginia, Kentucky, and Ohio earlier today. They, I guess the word is contest or protest against Chris Miller's assignment or appointment, proposed appointment to this position, saying that their prior representative, Randy Moore, was their representative, they believe was there legally and should not have been dismissed, and that they have another appointee, Sherry McKinney, who they would forward for the county commission and the mayor's review through this process. I am not familiar with any of the individuals here, but as, as they are a, as they are residents and active members of a substantial union organization over five counties, I did, I, they asked that I share their concerns with the public and with council members, and so that's what I'm going to do.
Okay, any other questions of council? Anyone from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
And the resolution is approved. All right, and that brings us to item number 16, good and welfare. I had three members of the public signed up to speak.
OEA, I'm trying to close the alleyway.
Ben Say?
Good evening.
Ben, good evening. Could you state your name and address for the record?
Sure.
Good and welfare for this time for the public is for us to listen to you and hear any concerns or whatever you may have.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
My name is Ben Say, and I live at 318 North Boulevard West. So, last Thursday, we had 10 inches of stormwater in our basement. The water came in through the drain in the floor and not from any other source. The city council meeting on January 27th, Mr. Brian Bracy, the executive director of the sanitation board, addressed this council and acknowledged that our infrastructure is old and in desperate need of repair, and that flooding is likely to continue until action is taken. Last Friday, our mayor addressed the City of Huntington in a public address, essentially agreed with Mr. Bracy's assessment. So, I guess, without going into too much history about our, my wife and I, and where we lived prior, and they had a similar issue, it was resolved. I guess the question that I have is, after the mayor's conversation with your group tonight, where do we go in terms of trying to understand what the next steps are, who's responsible, and creating a timeline for flooding issues in our city? It's not clear, as a new resident, we've only been here 13 months, it's absolutely not clear who is kicking the can down the street and where we can go to receive some sort of progress and establishment of some degree of transparency about how to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. If you could state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. That was my lovely penmanship. That wasn't your fault. My name is Brianna Bowen, and my local address, sorry, my phone is sliding all over the place. My local address is 455 Knight Street, right across the alleyway. First off, I want to say thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. This was my first day in the new chambers. The last time I came, you all were still over at the arena, and so it is beautiful, and I spent the first hour in the window sill because the seats were full, and once I got an open seat, it was all cushy and nice, and so, I don't know, just, it's beautiful in here. So, there's that. Welcome to the new faces. You all are going to get to know me. I come occasionally, and I will say I'm going to be in trouble because my eight-year-old loves coming to council meetings, and I will hear about it when she finds out that I was here, because she loves telling people, "I go to council meetings." That's what she tells them. So, I wanted to come, obviously, because the mayor was going to be discussing the budget today, and as you all are, most of you are familiar with, the City of Huntington and council has always been very supportive of the Cabell County Public Library. We have four locations within the City of Huntington, Gallagher, Guyan Dot, West Huntington, and the main library right here downtown. You have always supported us, you've always been there for us, give us some yearly monetary support, and as you look and review, look over and review the budget, I just ask that you all please remember the public library, please remember the countless individuals who utilize the public library for a variety of needs, all the way from fun things to educational, to a place and a space to hang out, learn, connect, and grow. I will make it quick because I know the people behind me probably want me to be quiet, but recently, I wrote a short column for the League of Women Voters, and I would love to read it to you quickly. The Cabell County Public Library is a cornerstone of our democratic society and a vital resource for our community. With eight libraries across the county, we proudly serve everyone and welcome individuals of all ages and backgrounds. Our mission is to provide spaces, resources, and programs that meet the diverse and ever-changing needs of our community. In Cabell County, our community has historically demonstrated an overwhelming commitment to its libraries through program attendance, usage of resources, and advocacy work. This most recently was demonstrated when voters overwhelmingly renewed the excess of... This most recently was demonstrated when voters overwhelmingly renewed the excess levy, ensuring the future of our libraries. To the voters of Cabo County, we are deeply grateful for your belief in and investment in your libraries and community. The Cabo County Public Library takes pride in being a hub of opportunity, offering critical services such as free Wi-Fi, printing, notary, and access to social work resources. Individuals visit the library to learn to read, to secure basic necessities like food and shelter, to complete homework help, to complete homework, to apply for jobs, to access technology, to attend programs, hear authors speak, and so much more. Thousands of people walk through our doors each year, reflecting the growing demand and for the wide range of services we offer. Last year alone, our public computers were used by thousands of individuals, and almost five hundred thousand materials were checked out in both electronic and print formats. We hosted thousands of programs for children, teens, and adults, and our library cardholders now number nearly a hundred and forty thousand. In total, two hundred and thirty-three thousand individuals walked through our libraries last year. That was an increase of thirty-five thousand people and visits. This local trend is mirrored across West Virginia. According to the twenty twenty-three State Statistical Data Report prepared by the West Virginia Library Commission, libraries statewide are thriving. People are reading, attending programs, accessing technology, and using the resources more than ever. To all the individuals in this room who are in a position of change and power, I ask you to please remember this, please take note, and just keep it in the back of your mind what the voters of Cabo County want in our community. I think it's evident more than ever that they want the library system to succeed, they want us to thrive, and they want us to exist, and to do that, I think our continued partnership is a huge component of that. So if you all need anything, I live next door, feel free, and hopefully next time you all will get to see Harper or meet Harper. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this brings us to the council portion of Good and Welfare. I'll start over here with Ms. Stacy Joe Hall.
Welcome to Huntington.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we will be able to work with you to get this problem solved in the future. I understand I was a product of a flash flood. We lost everything we had when I was younger, so we had thirty-six inches of water in our house. Not around here, but it was it's a tragedy, so my heart goes out to everybody that lost anything in the flooding.
Ms. Linda Blough.
I would just like to thank, I'm so sorry, forgot your name, that spoke up about the libraries. I think the libraries are definitely an essential part of our city, and we need to support them.
Yeah, Ms. Teresa Johnson. Ms. Dea Rumbow.
I thought that the mayor's presentation on the budget was incredible. I loved seeing all of those slideshows and graphs and all of that stuff. I thought that was that was thrilling. It was absolutely amazing, actually. So I'm so excited and looking forward to geeking out about the budget and the budget hearings, which are scheduled, I believe, for Saturday, March first. Those are public hearings where people can come and listen, and we'll ask questions and things like that, and then it'll be followed up with a city council meeting, I think a week later, maybe. It'll get scheduled where we will vote on whether to make any amendments to the budget or vote yes and send it on to the state. So I encourage those in the public, I know you guys just got slides, we just got our big binders, we're going to look through it, and then we're going to have those public hearings on Saturday, March first. It's going to be an all-day affair. Come check it out, we'll ask questions, and I feel very hopeful about the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six after today's presentation. I thought that was just a total home run. I thought it was great. And then I guess the other thing to say, let's see, what else is there? I I received texts from all sorts of constituents, all sorts of residents, because I represent downtown Huntington, so everybody, doesn't matter where you live, all of us enjoy downtown Huntington, and if there is a problem that you're experiencing, I'm here to help. So if you're a new resident, which is always exciting to hear, you can reach out to me, or you can also find our contact information on the City of Huntington website, so you can reach out to your individual district rep, but all of us here are pretty awesome people, right? And we're all here to help, we're all in this together. So if you are in a different part of town, you're welcome to reach out, and we'll make sure that it gets handled accordingly. So keep that in mind. Friday is Valentine's Day, and so I've got a lot of love in my heart right now for for everyone in our community, and I hope that continues for all of us. So that's it. Wishing you all good good Valentine's Days and and all that that mushy stuff. All right, there I go.
Thank you. Ms. Sarah Walling.
I'm going to join Ms. Bowen in a little library love this evening. For the first time, I got to volunteer on Saturday at the library's book sale. It's put on by the Friends of the Library, and the proceeds from the book sale go to support the Friends programming, so it helps cover the cost of summer reading programs. It helps to bring authors in. We have a nationally known bestselling author coming in in May. Yes, and so I'm really excited about that. But the the book sale proceeds help to to pay for those things so that we can offer them at no charge to the community. The library is always taking donations of books. If it's something that may fill a gap in their collection, they may use it for the the main collection that folks can check out, or the books that you donate may go into the book sale. So either way, it's a win-win for the library. The next book sale is going to be in June. Brianna, June, it's the first first weekend in June. On Friday, books will be individually priced. On Saturday, it's like a fire sale. It's a you can fill a whole bag for three bucks or a whole box for ten, so I know June seems like a long way off, but it's really not. We have actually set up social media events for all of our book sales this year, and you can find those by going to the Friends of the Cabo County Library page on Facebook, where you can also get information on how to become a friend of the library. Friends memberships start at ten bucks, so it's very affordable for everyone. I love the library, I've always loved the library, and I'm a lifetime library supporter. And because I miss Mr. Jackson still very much, I love you all, and I'm just happy to be here.
My girl. All right, Mr. Archer.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank our first responders for their quick actions with the recent flooding, also Public Works. I also want to reach out and say thank you to our mayor. His rapid response helped us tremendously so that we could all correlate together with that. He provided immediate and effective support in that, so I do want to say that. Also want to reach out to Councilmember Walling for having me at Harmony House the other day. It was a great experience. I encourage everybody to obviously give to these people. They all need us, we're all in this together. It was a great experience, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
The other thing I would like to say is, I feel like there's a lot of division still out there right now with a lot of different topics, and I just encourage everybody to keep trying to unite each other. Let's try to build each other up so we can make this city better. Other than that, that's it, thank you.
Mr. Rob Archer.
My thoughts and prayers are with the flood victims of both Fort Polk Creek and Krauts Creek. I met with many of them in the last few days since the flood, and a big thank you to all the city works employees who are helping. I saw many trucks out helping the people and getting things like that, getting the couches, things like that. So the response was great, but also prevention's key.
Ms. Hallie Lehman.
Yeah, so my mom lives over on Enzillo Boulevard, so I was very thankful to get a CAS alert at six o'clock in the morning to where I was able to call her to check on her, to make sure, you know, everything was going okay, not that I could get to her, but just to check on her. So I would really encourage folks to download the Cabo County nine one one CAS alert system, also three one one, it's an amazing app to notify, well, CAS notifies people, but you can notify the city of of anything with the three one one. Also, just remembering Councilman Jackson and happy to be here, and also congratulate him on his opening of the Culture Cafe this weekend, and encourage folks to go and support our local businesses, thanking Brianna for coming and speaking about the library. As a former Rapid Rehousing Case Manager for branches, INR is was a huge resource to getting people meals, driver's licenses, help with their utilities. I mean, INR is such a great resource for our city and all of the individuals that live here, and I, for one, will always support the library no matter what. And yeah, just encourage folks to ask all the questions and wait for the answers, good or bad, and that, you know, you can always contact us to ask us all of the questions, and we'll try our best with the answers.
Mr. Todd Sweeney.
First, I want to wish my wife of almost twenty-nine years a happy Valentine's Day. Secondly, they're forecasting a bunch of snow in the morning, so if you have to commute, please allow yourself extra time to reach your destination and be careful.
Yeah, with that, I want to say thank you to Vice Chair Sweeney for our last meeting stepping in for me. I also want to thank St. Mary's, their emergency room, and their clinical decision unit for taking very good care of me overnight. My message to everyone out there is do not ignore problems, get them addressed, or you end up like me, which you don't want to do. So I am back and healthy, and thanks to everyone who reached out with texts and phone calls. It was greatly appreciated, very humbling, so I want to say thank you. And with that, I'll entertain the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
[applause]